We'll have a moment of silent meditation and let's just flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to call it order this meeting in Monmouth County Commission. All three commissioners are present and it is Wednesday, July the 10th, 2020.
June 10th.
June 10th.
You're a month ahead.
Okay. Well, perhaps it would be better if it were June 10th, July 10th.
I don't know.
Anyway, sorry. June 10th, 2020, and it is 10:05. We will begin with consents and approval. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. Okay. We have three exonerations for $849.72, 72 cents. Vouchers General County Fund, $249,144.03. Coal Severance, $6,499.83. 911, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, $981.71. Camp Muffley, $13,043.70. Mason Dixon Park, $5,356.32. Recreation Levy, $36,262.50. Reallocated coal, $15,000. Assessors valuation, $4,003.8020. General County, $14,581.71. Chestnut Ridge Park, $460.02. Camp Muffley, $960.07. Mason Dixon Park, $89.85. Assessors valuation, $1,043.546. For a voucher total of $348.449.40. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Montague County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandoned Delayed Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, Network Trail, I'm sorry, Mount Air Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary orders for June 10th, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
You, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You also have a petition for the removal of an executor in the Ronald L. Collins estate. If you recall, this is the estate that was due to be closed
Yes.
in your administrative closing last week and then you pulled it. The gentleman did subsequently file a petition for removal of the executor. So you would need to either approve the petition or deny the petition.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition with discussion.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so as I understand it, the estate was opened on 6/17/2013. The current executrist has never filed an empracement or any other accountings. And the second name executrist in the will is ready to come in and be appointed if we approve the petition. So we could refer to fiduciary commissioner, but it sounds pretty straightforward.
Do we want to settle time limit on this for?
Well, we, the motion would be to approve the petition. Then it would move forward and a new executrist would be appointed.
It's been properly moved in second to appoint the new executrist. All in favor?
Aye.
What I was going to say is Tom had great difficulty making motions last week without you being here.
I know. I kept forgetting because you usually do that.
I kept waiting.
Yes, that is correct.
I don't see any listing, but do we have any introductions of any new employees or personnel changes? Hearing none, we will go to comments from the public. We are now open for comments from the public. If you wish to speak, you do have three minutes.
Good morning. I'll take my mask off for a moment. I'm David Goldberg, President and CEO of MON Health. I want to first congratulate everyone who ran for office, who was elected, and thank those who made efforts to be elected to show how important it is to serve our community. I wanted to give a little update. It's been quite a while since I've been in front of the commission. First and foremost, I want to thank the commission. I want to thank our first responders. I want to thank EMS, WV Medicine, MON Health, everyone in between, all of our independent doctors, for continuing the effort to keep us safe during COVID-19, the pandemic. We're not out of it. We won't be out of it for a while. I'm wearing my mask because it's the right thing to do to protect ourselves, protect spread. I was at my hospital today at 5:30 this morning, screening all of our employees before we come in. Compliments to your staff as I came in with their face shield and testing for temperature. I think that's wonderful. So I want to be able to hopefully relate to the community. You've probably heard me and seen me write things and heard me on the radio. Follow your doctor's orders. If you need care, don't be one of those people to put things off that could cause you to be in worse healthcare shape than if you would have managed it sooner. I've known of people who put off heart care and they've dropped of heart attacks. I've known people who have put off issues related to blood pressure and they've had strokes. That is what we're seeing around the country. We're also seeing emergency rooms around the country be anywhere from 30 to 50% less busy now post-COVID than before. Why? People are scared to come back. Get it? Don't put off your healthcare. Go to your doctor. Use a virtual visit or an e-visit. Talk with your doctor. ERs are for emergency, but when in doubt, go there if you need your care. I wanted to share some exciting news with the commission. One, it's almost a year since the merger with MON EMS. Look forward for Forrest to come and give an update to you all. Could not be more pleased. I'm thrilled to be partners with WV Medicine and Albert Wright as we continue to deliver what is first and foremost the most important thing, which is timely care to those in need for emergency services. What I'm most excited about is the ongoing cardiac excellence we have in Mon County and the region. Not only the Heart Vascular Institute at WV Medicine, but just recently, MON General, I'll still call it that, was recognized as a heart care center. It's one of 24 in the country. The only comprehensive AFib center in the state. The only chest pain nine years in a row accredited. And the 24th in the country and only one in the region to get that designation. That speaks volumes about the cardiovascular providers we have in our community to take care of our people. One of the things that we did, because I believe minutes matter, is we post on our website the wait time for someone to come into our emergency room. Right now, before I walked in, it was two minutes to see a provider. So I think it's important that the community gets timely care. And I will do everything within my being that all of our MON Health hospitals will be timely for someone who presents with what they think is an emergency. They will be triaged and the most emergent will be seen first, but timely care is most important. I also wanted to talk a little bit about, many of you know, we built a building out at the Gateway a few years ago. EMS is there, Wedgwood is there. Now Dr. Alan Hess, who many of us know, and Dr. Bainbridge, opened their primary care office there. So it is fully open. Thrilled. That was June 1st. He's closer to home. So it's always good to keep our doctors happy. And it's expanding primary care in other areas of the county. So people have ready access, including walk-in services. The last thing I'll say, and I know that we'll have other conversations just about from a public health perspective. I want to compliment Lee Smith and the Public Health Department, Sam Chico, the board. We have a ways to go to continue to ensure that we have safety for our community as a whole. But what we've been through and where we're going in the future can't be done without awesome partnerships. So look forward to those conversations. Thank you for the leadership. Thank you to the community at large for their support of us. And welcome to answer any questions or thoughts that you may have related to anything, related to MON or anything.
No problem, David. I really appreciate you coming and talking before us. How long have you been in your position? It's been how long now?
In dog years or in actual years? I've been here since October of 2018, so just about a year and a half or so. I know it feels longer. I love it.
It's incredible because you're embedded in this community. It's like you've been here forever. So you're doing a great job and not just to this immediate community, to the whole region, so.
And I'm a Morgantown resident. I own a condo over at the Marriott. So I pay my taxes. I pay my assessment. I actually got my letter the other day about that. So I love being here. My wife and I love Morgantown. We love Mon County. We love West Virginia. I'm a transplant and we plan to be here for a long time. So thanks for the opportunity.
We appreciate everything you're doing. And I was going to mention that, yes, it'd be good for, it'd be good for the public to know how well the ambulatory services is going. And it seems to be flawless, you know, since you guys have put your heads together. And hopefully we have a lot more things where you guys work together.
Absolutely. I think the ending message is collaboration is good. And I think it's better today than it's ever been and will continue to be that way. And I give a lot of credit to Albert, Dr. Marsh, Dr. Gee, Ron Stovash, our board chair, and the rest of the board, because at the end of the day, we don't need to fight. We need to collaborate for the betterment of the community. And I give a lot of credit to everyone that we're putting the patient in the center of what we do. So thank you very much.
And just for a procedural, if I can ask that, we could have suspended the rules so we can speak if you have a second. So that way we follow procedure.
Sure.
Okay. That way, that way we were allowed to talk to you.
After the fact.
After the fact, but at least, no, at least.
So when we're in public, if you don't suspend the rules, I'm not going to talk to you.
No, I appreciate, no, I appreciate it. In fact, it's always great to see you because lately, all you do is come with good news. And it's so nice to have that. So we look forward to working with you and then later in the afternoon to discuss the future of our public health program, which we all need to work on. So.
No, and it's all good. Everything in partnership makes it better.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, sorry, Tom. That's okay. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? And I will give an extra minute, since I gave an extra minute, to David.
Thank you. My name is James Coats and I'm Chair of the Conservation Committee for the West Virginia Chapter of the Sierra Club. Again, congratulations on primary victories. Obviously, running and opposed is the best way to run, but for those who did win a tough race, good for you. Last week, I stopped by to deliver a petition opposing a pilot agreement for the Longview Power Plant. And this is at least the fourth time that we have come before you to talk about that issue. Earlier this year, we had a lot of discussion about the Appalachian Stewardship Foundation. And regardless of anybody's opinion on that issue, I do believe that this commission has correctly identified the main issue about a new pilot agreement. And that is, what are we going to do about greenhouse gases? Regardless of what happened with the last go-around, it is clear that the ball is now in your court. The pilot agreement that's being negotiated is the one that should be addressing any greenhouse gases. And so we would urge that you make climate mitigation a condition of any pilot agreement and that that should be clearly identified. Given the current bankruptcy of the Longview Plant, we think it is important to consider the transition of any workers on fossil fuel because a new 1,200-megawatt plant is clearly going to have an impact on the competitiveness of other fossil fuel plants in the region. We think it would be very sensible to separate the pilot agreement for a gas-fired power plant from a solar plant. Those two are very different issues. It is clear that solar energy is becoming much more competitive and has a much brighter future, if you will pardon the fun, than fossil fuel facilities. Most of all, we would like a chance to discuss these issues in a more open setting than just public comment. I think that there's an opportunity to sound out some of these issues and explore them in more detail. And hopefully, we can agree on at least some of those conditions. The Sierra Club is opposed to tax breaks for fossil fuel facilities. We think we have to address climate change. But we recognize that that is a difficult position and we'd like to at least have a chance to talk over some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I was going to go ahead and let you report at the end, but if you wish to give your report now, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, all right. All right, we will close comments from the public at this time then, okay? Colleen, do we have grants?
I have two requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the VOCA grant in the amount of $6,433.28. And the next one is for the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $817.15.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sheriff Palmer, congratulations on your hearing. We have a presentation of the 2019 list of delinquent taxes.
Good morning. I'm here to present you with the delinquent taxes for 2019, real estate and personal property taxes. I'm going to let my chief tax deputy talk a little bit about the change due to the governor's executive order. And I'm going to back off. So we keep our six feet distancing.
So normally, this list is presented after it is published in the newspaper. And then you all accept it. That has to be done before July 1st. So the list was just produced on Monday evening at close of business. We were closed yesterday. So we are going to go ahead and give this to you for your review. And it is posted for the public in our office. And then it'll be in the newspaper within the next 10 days. And then we'll come back on July 1st for approval. You've been able to review it for at least two weeks prior to it being approved. We're just trying to get ourselves back into compliance and everything is just kind of off a little bit. So we will, if we keep, you know, prolonging everything a month, we're really going to get far behind it at the end of the year. So.
Thank you.
Can you give us some idea of what we're looking at, the volume compared to other years? Or do you have any of that information?
We have not been able to compile that. We're working on it right now. And I can give you preliminary numbers.
When you come back.
From what I kind of glanced at, it's actually not quite as much as it had been in the past.
Okay, you just said it there. And so the public understands too, these are delinquent. These taxes, eventually when we approve the list, will be paid eventually.
Correct. Correct. This is just what, yeah. Speaking in just regular terms, they're just past due bills.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Correspondence first. Notice received from Eaton Park Hospitality Group regarding a temporary layoff of employees.
They sent us a list of employees and their status as far as part-time or full-time. There's a total of 43 that's, they're expected to last, expected to last around six months. However, they, it could be extended beyond the six-month period. But they've given us a contact information if anybody would need to contact them.
Second, we recognize petition delivered to the County Commission last June 3rd on behalf of the Sierra Club.
Before you go on to that, can I just ask a question about the Eaton Park letter? They've been shut down for some time. Is this just to kind of catch up and be compliant with the Warren Act?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they had initially tried to reopen and then I don't know if business just didn't come back right away. And I'm not exactly sure. I haven't, I haven't actually talked to anyone, anyone there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. No, that's okay. Is there any other correspondence?
Just the petition. It was brought in last week after the meeting was already over. So I had Colleen timestamp it and it's in an envelope if anybody wants to take a look at it.
And just for clarity, because, just so he knows, we waited till this to make it official. So that way, you know, that it was documented.
Recognized that it's.
Because we hadn't opened it yet.
So, okay.
Okay.
Any other correspondence?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
New business to consider for approval, requisition number 28 for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2017 A Project Fund.
Requisition is for $76,070. And those funds will be paid $40,000 to Adrian Enterprises for project management and $36,070 to Thrasher Group for engineering services.
Move to approve requisition 28 as presented?
Second.
Properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, consideration of requisition number 42 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
This is for, requisition is for $177,504.67. And these are sales tax collections for the month of April.
And it's the regular deposit less the statutory lien of $100,000. I move to approve requisition 42 as presented?
Second.
Properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll now have a report on our census and how it's going, if you don't mind.
And for clarity, this is the reports from elected officials section?
Yes.
Yes.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I promise I'm not here to rob you. Bank robber mask on me.
I guess all we can say is the good news is we're above the voting percentage. We're above the voting percentage, but.
Well, it's good to be back and seeing everyone in a, in person. I have been doing my best to try to keep up communication in regards to, with Carol Bush and Ron and everybody at WV. Communication with the census with the city has been not, I honestly, between Carol, myself and Ron, I haven't heard anything from the city's standpoint necessarily due to Skylar leaving, since she was a student at WV. And obviously, every, all the students went home early this year. And I think her interim position or whatever she was doing at the city kind of ended early. But at this time, the most recent communication from Mrs. Bush at the US Census as our representative in the area, I'm just going to kind of read you some of the communication that she emailed us on Friday. I did print out the numbers for you. The maps don't seem to be updated on a regular, as much as a regular basis. Our most recent numbers came out last Friday. The national self-response rate right now, if you look at the first map, printout I did for you, is at 60.8%. Unfortunately, West Virginia right now is at 48.2%, and that's next to last. And that's a little disconcerting. We are at 49 out of 50 states right now, just falling underneath of New Mexico. This is exactly where we stood in the 2010 census, finishing next to last as well. However, if you turn over to Monmouth County's self-response rate, we are one of the highest counties in the state of West Virginia. We're at a 56.8% response rate. West Virginia, again, as a whole, is at 48.2. So we're doing well above what the actual state average is at this point. Again, I tried to print off some of the census tracks. If you were to look at the census tracks in Monmouth County, how it's broken up, again, the low response rate is around those multi-residential communities around the city of Morgantown, which obviously is going to be your student housing areas. So those numbers are not coming back in, you know, a great reply. So at this point, I was just checking my phone and Mrs. Bush sent an email response to back and forth to Ron and I. The, some good news is she was giving permission for census employees to be able to come back into the community as of this week, to try to just do some community outreach, get those numbers up as best as we can. The county and city continue to make progress with the many census tracks already exceeding their 2010 self-response rate, showing those impressive numbers, okay? But again, we're still, you know, very much behind according to the national percent average. Let's see, she said, she hasn't really heard anymore. We tried to do a little bit of a competition with Huntington, Campbell County, that area down there. And again, the response rate hasn't been that great. Just more of the outreach thing to try to see how we can do between Monmouth County and Campbell County, just to try to get the word out there, what's going on. Again, as community officials, it's good to try to push this issue because the bigger response rate we do have, the more money we receive for our programs here in West Virginia. I will continue to send the maps to you guys on a weekly basis, however, they're updated the most. And we're just going to kind of go from there. But if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Mike, what is the deadline as far as when the county is supposed to be done? Has anything been extended?
It has been extended. The campuses, I'll, Sean, I don't want to give you a for-sure answer because I'm not even for sure because it seems to bounce around all the time. I'll find that right now when I get that back downstairs. But since COVID-19 happened, everything has been pushed forward. The enumerators and the campuses going, you know, out into the field and checking for the people, the leaflets they did, or the responses they didn't get back, they will be doing that, I think, sometime in August or September. Don't quote me on that, but I feel like that's the last thing I read and Tom and I were communicating back and forth. It just seems like the dates keep getting pushed further and further. Which, that's, that's good for us, especially since we're at such a low self-response rate right now in West Virginia.
First of all, I want to thank you because Mike's been the lead on this. And, you know, we really appreciate you coordinating this. My one question is, and I don't know if you have an answer. What do we do for, you know, the worst area, I saw it was like 20% in those multi-residential communities, and the people aren't there. What do we do? Do we, that's why I'm hoping if the students come back in August. But before, is there any plan?
That's, that's a great question, Tom. And I think that's opening lines of communication with Mr. Justice at WV and seeing what they're doing in regards to, because that was an issue we had early on. That was what we were trying to educate, and WV was trying to educate the students on it at that time. And they're no longer there.
Right.
Because we were trying to push the issue, like you guys need to, yourself, your response needs to be here in Mon County. And again, they all went home two, three months early. And we're kind of afraid that the parents are claiming them there. And again, you know, you have to reply in your response, the majority of where you live that time of year has to be here. And I do believe that a lot of communication has been done through WV with parents calling, in fact, directly. And just being like, well, do we count our kid here? Do we count our kid there? And I think they're doing a good job, but I'll get some more clarification for, you know, through that.
I know they're trying.
Yeah, they're trying. But again, it, it's pretty much very similar to the way it was in 2010. But this time, COVID kind of gave us a bigger hiccup. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
So if it, if it does get extended into August, we might have students back?
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah, that's correct. And that, that is what I'm personally hoping for. So. Again, it's just kind of opening lines of communication with the city again, once, you know, they get kind of full.
I will contact Emily. We've been working on a number of projects. And just ask who she's designated to. She may not know about it. So.
That's true. That's true.
Okay, so I'll talk with Emily.
Just let me know, Tom. Shoot me an email or CC me on that.
I'll do both, yeah.
Okay, great. But.
And one other thing, it doesn't seem to be, I don't know who's, where the mail campaign is, if that's nach, national. Because the mail keeps coming and we turned in our census, I mean, I get one for me, I get one for my wife.
Oh, I know.
And it keeps coming and we did it a long time ago.
So it doesn't seem to be any, it doesn't seem to be real-time connectivity with who's responded
and who still needs to respond to focus on those people.
Yeah, and I think, I think the governor's probably going to need to start issuing some type of, you know, some kind of response just to be, well, due to the COVID thing, everything has been delayed this much. And he has in his daily, you know, speech sometimes, he has done a good job saying, you guys need to do this. You know, because it's going to benefit us in the end run, but.
And I know I'm delaying, I'm forwarding the conversation on, but when they first started this conversation way back in spring, they were talking about people they were hiring and stuff. Are they still hiring people?
I haven't heard anything about that because, and that goes back.
Actually, they are because I have two teachers, friends.
Great.
And they're, in fact, they've been asked to go out of state of West Virginia to other outline areas. So they're just starting to do that, yes.
Well, and again, I think that's with the communication I literally just got from Carol on my phone back there, sitting back there, that she said they are now allowed to come back into the communities.
Just started up.
Yeah, just started back up because the census at that time was like, you guys aren't allowed to go out and touch anybody, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
Well, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We do appreciate all your efforts. Okay? Do we have any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none, we'll move to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
Mine will be fairly quick. I wasn't here last week. I took a week to spend some time with my family. But I did have a couple of calls from the road. I had a call last Wednesday with Matt Wells, Assistant AD, Matt Dreher, who's the general manager for the Black Bears, Todd Proznik from the Health Department. And we were just talking about general overall procedures and steps we need to take to reopen Mon County Ballpark. We had a follow-up call. Actually, we have a follow-up call tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to keeping that conversation going. Monday, I had a joint use management agreement committee meeting. That's the group, three members from WV and three members from Myland Park Foundation that manage the aquatic center. Wasn't a lot to report. Those are quarterly meetings and we only had a week of performance in regards to since they've been open. So we're still kind of closely monitoring where we're at in regards to lost revenue. You know, through this, through this period, budget-wise, we're, you know, obviously our revenue is impacted. And expenses are, you know, revenue would be running, if revenue is running at 70%, expenses are running at 95. So we're trying to get a handle on that. And we expect things to normalize by the end of the month and then hopefully we'll get a good picture by July. But there are not enough details. get a good picture by July, but there's not enough detail for me to provide any more information to that regard. Yesterday was obviously Election Day. Today, we had our call with Green County Commission. It's a regular day, and then we have our county operations call. Thursday, tomorrow, I have a red team meeting, Development Authority meeting, and that Mon County Ballpark Committee meeting that I discussed, and Friday, we have a meeting with staff and a work session. In general, Carrie, I'm sorry, you're sitting right perfectly behind that beam, but I want to thank you and your staff for all your hard work. Once again, as, you know, the Mon County leads the state in regards to response and being able to get all of our results in and close up shop, we were, we were out of the election center at nine o'clock, so about an hour and a half.
Just one minute.
It was, I continue to be amazed at how well you, you handle that process, so thank you very much, and please thank your staff. And oh, and census, census, census. I guess we've just got to keep talking about that, so, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, first, I do want to thank Carrie and her staff, and I think people don't understand, she did four elections this time, and I think the people need to understand that. The basic absentee, the early voting, the election, and then we have the canvassing again, which is really four different elections. And I want to say, we were sitting there, and we were at 13 precincts, and then all of a sudden, she walked back 10 minutes later for that, and we couldn't believe, it was all of them. All the precincts were done, and it was really funny, because it swayed all the votes statewide uniquely, but that, they were out there. So again, I want to thank you and their staff. The second, I do want to thank the voters, and, you know, and I think it says a lot to the voters. My wife and I got to do a long run this morning on the Rails and Trails, and I don't think people understood how important the Rails and Trails were until this COVID virus, because I've seen more people on there. It was an outlay that people could walk, and they understood why it was important. And I know, Sean, you bike all the time, but it's unbelievable to see how many people have been on there, and I want to thank, you know, to support all four levees. I says, that says a lot also about the commission and our direction, and really appreciate that. And finally, on Election Day, I was fortunate or unfortunate, we had a three-hour meeting at Morgantown City Council Chambers, and we had, it was in the discussion of concerning the encampment, and the city, WVCEH, and the actual owners were there, and what I'm real excited about is that we have come up and developed a plan that the city manager will be expressing and coordinating it through the WVCH, and I'm looking forward to that to come public. And I do want to thank all the parties and the leadership of Emily Musarelli, who really orchestrated and got us all on the same path, and I'm looking forward to that being public. Thank you.
One thing before you, I forgot, in talking about the election, I'd like to thank all the candidates, whether you won or not. There's a lot of new faces, and it's, it's great to see people putting themselves out there to, to serve, so congratulations if you won. If you didn't, thank you for agreeing to serve or trying to serve, but it, when you sit in this position, you understand what that means.
And congratulations on your win.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the best way to run, unopposed.
I don't want to sound like an echo chamber, but again, Carrie, your staff, such an efficient and organized election driving home. I listened to Metro News comment that they were waiting on Canal County as we were driving home. I think this is remarkable. We were done, and so thank you, and thank your staff. I also want to thank the voters in Montague County for your support of these four levees. It shows the community of Montague County is willing to support that which makes our community stronger. And I'd like to propose that we do get back, however, to an initiative that we started meeting with officials Bird White and Jimmy Riston. It is time for us to revisit this meeting. Now, we may have to do it by telephone, or we may have to do it by a video conference, but I do want to revisit. I don't want this ball being dropped. Also, to get a report from our district and Darby Clayton, so I think if we could get this scheduled, it would be good. I have a telephone conference at the Planning Commission tonight. And lastly, I have to tell this, a, a community member called, but didn't call me, but called Becca, our 4-H agent, and said, I know you know Ed Hawkins, so would you please ask him if he would see what's going on at the Mount Calvary Cemetery, because there seems to be a lot of dirt piled up, and maybe tombstones are being disrupted or falling down. So I did go out there yesterday, right after I voted. I drove the entirety of the cemetery. I can assure this caller that everything was and is in order. It's being treated respectfully with the work that's going on. There's a lot of leveling of ground beside this particular entity, but I do want her to understand, whoever she is, that she only said, I know you know Ed Hawkins. So please, I think the community needs to know that we answer all our phone calls one way or another. We try to get back to them. So, you know, that way, I hope that she gets word of this. Perhaps, Ben, you might say that we did check on Mount Calvary Cemetery, okay? Thank you.
Before we adjourn, you might say, we are going outside after adjournment to award a, the winner of the county commission essay, so we're, contest, so.
Statewide.
Statewide was the first place, so we're going outside now to do that. I just wanted to publicly say.
Right. We did not have the opportunity to be able to have the youth, since they weren't in school, do what we usually do with a county-wide, but there were submissions, and as usual, Montague County was a winner, as it always is.
For Mount in their middle, and we'll talk about that. Move to adjourn?
Second?
We are adjourned. Shall we go outside, because they've been out there since 10:30?